We're doing good, how about you?
You're a lot quieter than that last auditor. You're a lot quieter than the last one. Where was you sitting? I didn't see you. That's where I need to be.
Hi, how are you? Alright, I need to call this meeting to order. And this, this meeting is a workshop on economic development. We do have a forum president. He'll show up here shortly. So let me give you a little background. The county receives money from the state controller's office. That is basically deposit, utility deposits that they can't, that the utility companies cannot return, cannot get returned to the proper owner because they've moved and there's no record of them. But there's uncol- there's money that the controller collects. And we put, submit an application to get that money. And each year we get a certain amount of money back from the controller. So this is not taxpayer money that we have, but it's being, it's in our account. And the county has designated this money to go to economic development. And in the past, we've worked with Pam, and then we introduce her, Pam Pearson, from the Will's Point Economic Development. And then we have Stacy Crossley from the Canton Economic Development. And Tammy, or, Tammy Wyman from the Van Economic Development. I think there's more, but I wasn't able to contact everybody. So I asked them to be here, because one of the things is, and we have in the past worked with Pam and, and helped out the companies, was it Legend Trailers, Big Text, or some of them that came in and we helped out. But we as a court need to come up with a decision. What is the criteria that we want to use to spend this money for as far as economic development? And you know, there's, do we want to promote jobs? Do we want to promote industry? You know, there's a lot of different things that, that we could do with it. And so what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna first ask Pam, because she has to go in thirty minutes, right? Or twenty-five minutes, fifteen, fifteen minutes, okay? She's gonna talk, I might ask her to just kind of tell us about Will's Point Economic Development and what, what, what you're working on or what your hope to, hope to spend money on.
Okay.
And how, how you think that Van Zandt County can help in that regard, okay?
So I would like to back up, and this is the same thing, property capital credits accounts is what this is for. And there are several things that it can be spent on. And probably in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, Judge Kirkpatrick and Bob Moore came to me and said, we need some economic development in our county. We would like to believe that. And I said, well, you receive funding every June that could go toward that. And it would really help us as economic developers to be able to have these companies that we're vying for them. And we don't have the funds that the Metroplex has, that you know, other cities could have, that having the county onboard would be a plus for us. And so that's what they wound up doing. I don't think a hundred percent of it went to economic development.
No, eighty-five, eighty-five percent.
The other goes to cap, I believe. But I've got these, if you would like to have those that show what it can be spent on. If you would like that, I did print that. So I just want to say, thank you for having us here. Thank you for thinking about economic development. Because as we're doing this, you've got to remember that the main thing that we are wanting to do is we're wanting to improve quality of life. We're wanting to grow jobs that are here at home where we don't have bedroom communities where they're leaving. Because if they're leaving our community, our gas stations, our restaurants, all of our secondary are not profiting from that. Now, as far as Will's point is, we are top eight in the state of Texas, which means it can only go to primary jobs. So we can't do the white picket fences, we can't do anything like that. We're growing industries. We're growing a sustainable wage for families to be able to work where they live. And so the two companies that so far the county has assisted Will's Point with were Brazos Traders and Midwest Tube Mills. As far as Brazos Traders goes, they had property in Gumbert City that they were going to grow their trader manufacturing industry in. And we were able to keep them in Van Zandt County because of the relationship between the city and Van Zandt County. The city provided property. And we provide typically money for employees within the seven five one six nine zip code. After they've been there for a year, they submit to us that they've been there for a year and then they request the funding. So we have a performance agreement. Excuse me, when I hear you cough, I'm gonna cough. We have a performance agreement that allows us to revoke the money, revoke the property, anything that we need to, if they don't meet our performance agreement. Typically, and not typically, every time that's been shared with you so that you can see what the investment of EDC is, what their promises on the number of jobs, what they're growing in our community and in Van Zandt County. So on Brazos Traders, you did, the county gave fifteen thousand dollars for fifteen employees. It was a thousand dollars per employee that were within the, the Van Zandt County that they hired. And then they came back and when they were expanding, they asked for permitting, reimbursement, and it was ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. So you've spent twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars towards Brazos Traders. And I just pulled this morning what they're going, what they're anticipated to pay this year in property tax. And just in property taxes, thirty-two thousand three seventy-three forty-three. I told you, someone calls, I'm gonna call. And then on the special road tax, they are looking at ten thousand five eighty-four oh five. So on that, you know, you've got nineteen, I mean, that's not right. You've got forty-two thousand, somewhere in there. You spent twenty-five thousand seventy-five. Return on investment, to me, not counting the jobs, not counting how they are shopping, working, everything that they're doing in communities and in our county. So then Midwest Tube Mills, when they came in, you did the very same thing. And I know this is a new commissioner's court, and I just want to say, please don't hold my last name against me. I appreciate all you done. I attended every commissioner's court I could until I had a conflict of interest. And then I've, I've stayed away. And I will be attending as often as I can. And I hope that if there's anything that we can help you with, I speak on behalf of the economic developers, that you will let us know. So on Midwest Tube Mills, the very same thing happened, it was fifteen thousand dollars. And that was for employees within Van Zandt County. So on theirs, they're, let me make sure I have brought one here. They're paying this year twenty-seven thousand three fifty-two sixty-two in property tax to, this is just to the county, this is not the school or the city. And in special road tax, they're paying eight thousand nine forty-two fifty-six. So out of both of these, the investment the county made into these two companies was forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And this year, they are anticipated to pay seventy-nine thousand two fifty-two sixty-six to the county for road and bridge tax and then for, you know, regular taxes. So I think when you look at the return on investment that the economic developers are growing on behalf of the county, that it says a lot. Brazos Traders, I told you, was building in Gumbert City. Midwest Tube Mills had a contract and had property in Waco that they'd had for two years and they were not able to get into it. What we can promise them here is that we can get through the red tape because we bring the right people to the table to be able to say, you know, the county's here on your behalf. We don't promise any funds from the county, but we will invite county representatives to be there so that they can see when they meet with key stakeholders that the counties are part of that. Because most companies, they want to go where they're welcome. And we can't offer a lot of money, but any little bit of buy-in. I just want to say it goes so far and I appreciate everything that the county does. I appreciate that you're looking at this to, to establish the vision for Van Zandt County because I believe we need that to make sure that, that, you know, you're going in the right direction. And if there's anything I can do to help, I'm here. I hate that I can't stay for this. I represent the judge and you for Van Zandt County on the East Texas Workforce Board for the TWC to make sure over twenty million dollars in funds, that we do receive some of that. And I have a meeting at eleven fifteen that I have to be at in Tyler. So I appreciate you letting me speak first.
I have one question right quick for you, if you don't mind. You, you commented that this is, they have to stay for twelve months employed. And so if we do do this, the money that, that we agree on or whatever is not given to them until after that twelve months.
Yes, so on Brazos.
And I assume that with the information you have there, do you keep up and follow this and track it for that twelve months?
Yes, so on Brazos Traders, it was paid in two different years. Six thousand dollars was paid after the first year because there were only six that stayed, you know, that full year. But then the following year, we were able to come back and collect for the rest. Because a lot of times it's not built and established and all the employees aren't hired within that first month or two. You know, they've got training, they get rid of some, they bring others in. So it's all however you want it to qualify. But EDCs, we do our due diligence to make sure that we work with our attorneys and make sure that we comply with all state laws and that we, we do our due diligence with our money that we spend. Thank you for that question. I submitted a roster is what I did, that showed that.
I just wanted, I, I figured it was you being, you had all the information, but.
That's why I think it's great that it's worked through economic developers because we do have the binding agreements through the state that you would have in your possession to be able to see what investment they're making on their buildings, on employees, on their equipment, on everything that they're doing.
Yeah, the agreements are all designed so that it's a performance base. And until they meet the performance, they don't get any money.
That's correct.
And, and most of, not all of them.
We've had two companies within the last three years that we've taken the property back because they didn't meet their agreement.
Any more questions for Pam?
Would anyone like?
Thank you.
Go ahead, the highlight that you found where it's changed, that's from twenty eighteen. But I haven't found any changes to that, the highlight, it shows where you can spend those funds on.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Stacy, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, so I didn't prepare anything, I didn't know if we're meeting in court. I just thought we were having a meeting, so I can wing this. I'm Stacy and I'm with the Canton Economic Development Corporation. We are not necessarily working on anything with the county, but we may soon. So we're working on a couple of big projects. We are a type A, so we get to do a little bit more, we get to do the white picket fence, which is fun, we get to do stuff that helps within the community. I know in the past, before with my, with my predecessor Julie, we did, I believe, something with Phoenix Foods to help them expand. And I think we even helped and worked together with the Veterans Memorial for them to buy the building. I think we did something with them, which was just a grant of money to help them purchase the building. We are currently, we just purchased eighty-six acres and we're expanding our industrial park because much like what Pam said, we want to provide more jobs, we are educating our kids and sending them. And so we need to focus on jobs and bring the jobs in here. And as well, we are a tourism community, we are, you know, First Monday. And that is a, that brings a lot of money into our county and into our community. And we want to focus a little bit more on that, not just First Monday, but on non-First Monday. And so we as a group are really focusing on, not necessarily putting all of our eggs in one basket, but reaching out. So we're working on a really big deal at the moment that I can't necessarily talk about, but we're really excited. We sold quite a few, pretty much all of the land that EDC owns is under contract or has just been purchased. And with the exception of the expansion that we're doing. So, and then we're working on an L O Y for another big project in downtown. So we are, we're basically.
So the, the land that you have under contract, is that for industry?
Well, the industrial park is all zoned industrial. And then everything else is zoned B two, which is going to be residential, commercial or multi-use. We cannot incentivize residential, and we don't.
Okay. Has there been any intent to try to lure higher education into the Canton area? Maybe Texas A and M extension or some of the local community colleges or something? I, I think adult education courses are important as well as education courses for those coming out of high school that maybe don't have the, the wherewithal to attend to four-year university. Is that something that we've considered as it relates to boosting or boosting our, our, our education for young people?
You know, economic development is helping with workforce. And yes, we've talked about it. I had, I think it was not too long, right before the bond for the school, we met with the superintendent for IS, for the Canton ISD. And I brought some representatives from Christmas over to talk about some needs in our community that we could focus on teaching the kids when they come out of school that they can jump into some of the positions that are needed.
But nothing for higher education?
Nothing right now, nothing that I'm working on yet, but it's talked about. And I know Terrell is doing some stuff and we're talking with what they're doing and looking at, not necessarily creating a wheel, but seeing what we, what other cities are doing and how we can incorporate it here. We're not there yet, I'm not there yet, I'm not, I've only been here for a couple of years as the EDC director. But it's definitely something that we're working on. And I also believe for our industry, you know, trying to find jobs that are higher-paying jobs in, in the medical field, that's where the money is. Our Christmas here in Canton is the busiest Christmas that they have. Is it in Silver Springs, busier than Athens? Palestine, our Christmas is bursting in the scene. And they need to expand, they need space, they need a bigger bill, they need more.
I know what that's about.
So I think that there is a, an industry of medical that we have got to dive into and really focus on. And so that is, especially from my office, that is something that we're focusing on.
And you're, and, and that, that would be an area that you would have an interest in is trying to get higher education, you know, post-twelfth grade, medical education for.
And we're fine, we're kind of the, you know, the school expanding. I think there's going to be room for, for classes and, and more training for that purpose. Absolutely, so when they come out, they will have, come back with some certifications so that they can focus on those jobs and being educated to handle those higher income paying jobs and keeping them here in our community. That's, that's that economic development all day.
How do we, and this will go for Tammy too. We've got forty miles of the interstate, or I don't know how many miles, but let's say approximately twenty-five, thirty, whatever it is. How do we use that to our advantage as far as economic development? Home Depot or, you know, warehouse jobs? Or, or how, how do we go about trying to get some of those jobs into here and, and use that interstate to our advantage instead of, you know, you, you drive down it now and there's, you know, there's, you know, it, it's a, it's a person's job and maybe one or two employees and you've got twenty buildings there when, you know, we could go and, you know, get some, something big, but I know it takes, that's not a city issue, it's a whole county issue. How do we try to promote that?
That's a great issue and a great question. Twenty is funny because once you hit the north side of it, it's not our water district. So we're Canton, right? And so Hurdle Springs has a big chunk of that. And if they can't supply the water, then you have to pay them to get the water to you and that's really, really expensive and they don't necessarily give up those water rights. The biggest problem is, one, we don't own the land, we don't control the land. So when you don't own land and you don't control the land, it's really hard to develop it. We, we don't have a lot of infrastructure. I know that right now, as you can see, right off of nineteen and twenty, but this is probably a five-year this project has been going on, which is right there at that corner, you know, where Chief,
Chief Express.
Express is. So they are doing a decelerization lane for a development right there. And it sped up the process for them to finish the frontage road from seventeen to nineteen. But can you imagine, that's going to be a three-year probably before they finish that they say. That's in the flood zone, they're gonna have to build a bridge, it's gonna be pretty expensive. They've got to get land of access, you know, for the easement. So that's the biggest, I think, our biggest project right now is trying to create some infrastructure. We did extend sewer down to twelve fifty-five, which is good, but we don't own any of that land. Any of it, and it's not for sale. So it's right now, trying to wait for some land to come and then maybe grab it and do some, some more infrastructure on it and get going. That's our biggest problem right now on twenty and water.
And I think Van's the same way, you know? Tammy, if you go past the Loves on the north side where the Dairy Queen, I mean, that would be perfect to develop that right there, but, you know.
For sale, but it privately owned.
Probably owned.
Yes, it's for sale, I'm, I'm peddling other people's property.
Well, like.
But also, look, whenever you see Home Depot or Buc-Ee's or these big things, have you ever looked at the incentives that the cities and counties are giving in the tax abatements?
No, I haven't looked, I, I've known about the tax payments, but kind of like Pam was saying, I know you've got to give and take with it, but in the long run, does it help you out? I mean, in the short run, it may cost, it's been a long run, run it may help us, you know? It's kind of a balancing act.
If I can, when you do, like Pam was saying, you, you try to structure your agreements based on what you have accomplished. You don't give them money until they show you their sales and they show you their jobs. And then you give them those, those free days. So they'll pay their taxes or property taxes. And when they show you, you know, whatever that agreement is, when they show you that they're accomplishing or they're, they're taking care of their obligations, then you reimburse them. So it's absolutely beneficial.
You see it, I mean, look at Kaufman County's got it and Smith County has it, Van Zandt doesn't.
You know, and, and here's the thing, again, I think infrastructure is a big deal. We are land for, I mean, there's no doubt about it for Canton, we're land for. There's a lot of people that own land that aren't selling it. So especially some of the good stuff, I've had a lot of people want to come here and they can't get the land that they want. So, and like I said, for us, twenty on the, on the north side is really difficult because.
Water, water is a big issue. We can't attract industry here because we don't have major sources of water. You know, Will's Point actually has the moratorium on adding new meters because of situations they have with their water supply.
But that's something we're gonna have to look at if we want to grow. I mean, we're gonna have to address that issue.
So we want to drive the growth up.
See.
I would, I mean, it's coming, so might as well definitely.
It is coming, but if certain people who own the water rights don't release them, there's nothing we can do, that's our problem, one of our problems. So we just have to work around it and, and wait for some land to come up. We've, we've done some infrastructure. You know, and I think a lot of things too. You know, when we did, Canton did a ten-year comprehensive plan about what we're gonna do for the next ten years. And we only stayed with ten years because too much is changing, too much is happening. I mean, there's twenty thousand people that drive through downtown every day. The traffic counts on twenty nineteen is forty-seven thousand, if not more now. I mean, the traffic is, is.
Forty-seven thousand coming into the county from the west and ten thousand less or more than that going.
So, but when you ask your citizens, what do you want? You know, because we did that, we did that with our downtown action plan and, and we did that with our, you know, plan for Canton, what do you want? Well, they, they all want a small-town feel. They don't want to be for you, they don't want to be Lindale, you know?
That's the, that's, that's the general consensus. We don't want to be a, my constituents do not want to be a suburb of Dallas.
So to answer the question, I think when it comes to twenty, we keep that, you know, as your, your bigger box, your retail, because they're, you know, like when, when Starbucks is wanting to come off of twenty, I mean, seventy-five percent of their, their sales are gonna come from the track, that, you know, just from the highway. They come on, get their food and, and get their drink and then they're gonna leave. And when it comes to the city itself, you know, if we sit there and think, what are you doing? Well, tourism, you know, come spend your money and then leave, you know? Don't be, don't be, you know, don't be such a hard burden on our, you know, our schools and, and on our infrastructure. So that's something that we can focus on and jobs for the, you know, just in Canton, we've got six hundred, six hundred roofs coming. Can't control that, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. If it's zoned and they buy the land, they can do it. So we, you know, what we've done is take steps to do ordinances that really benefit us more so so that we don't have a lot of, just one type of housing, but it, you know, it, it's structured so that you can have small, medium and large houses and not just a bunch of small houses, our streets are wider. You know, so we're, we're taking steps to try and control that in a positive way. But we gotta have jobs for those people. Why would we build these houses and then send our kids off to leave? And so that's, that's what we're focused on. And when there's a couple of projects that are coming, I just, you know, knock on wood, I've got a contract for my first fifteen acres in the industrial park that we, that we haven't even set ground yet on. So I mean, people want to be here and we want to create jobs here. So when we do have a project, I'll come to you that I feel that needs a little bit of help. I will, I've got a couple more really good stuff. So one big one that we're working on, you'll probably see me soon.
Okay. And what, what is this, the city's view of tax abatements?
They're, they're for it, we don't do a hundred percent, you know? We're not interested in giving a hundred percent tax abatement. And I think it depends on the, on the business that comes. We've been, like I've done for the, I will give all of ours and then maybe the city will do half of theirs. Because let's face it, with all the, the growth that's coming in, it costs the city a lot of money for them. You know, we are just, the, the permitting is just like this right now. So it costs a lot of money. So we're not giving all of the abatements away, but we're giving enough away. And we try to stay in that seven-year return rate, seven to ten-year depending on the business. It's a big business and if they're bringing a lot of sales and a lot of jobs, then, I mean, it's better than getting, you know, agriculture, you know, six hundred dollars a month as opposed to, or six hundred a year as opposed to, you know, hundred and fifty thousand.
That's why the interstate's important.
It is important, I agree with you. And if you can get me some land, you and I'll be best friends.
So we, my experience with the Canton Economic Development, with running strategies, they, the Canton Economic Development bought the building up on the East Tyler Street and provided a fifty thousand dollar amount to refurbish it, do the inside. And it was based on, they, they got them started and they started the business in there. And then they paid based on jobs too.
Everything that we do has to be around, I mean legally, we have to have jobs tied to it. So if it doesn't have a job tied to it, what am I gonna do? So you gotta bring some jobs. Yeah, well, there's a, those are, those are smaller projects, but yes, absolutely. Like we're, we've done a couple of things, like we're, we're changing out some signage for Canton downtown. We're trying to really, we're really focused on our downtown and making our downtown. I think it looks, if anybody knows Canton, downtown looks a little bit different, I think. We spend a lot of time trying to fix up, beautify, bring more businesses into downtown because when people are coming to look at your city, if your downtown looks great and it's busy and it's alive, I think that's a positive sign for anybody coming into the community. And so we don't have a lot of dilapidated buildings anymore. Everybody's on the train to fixing up and, and trying to preserve the historic integrity of our downtown. And that makes us kind of special, that's our, we're kind of a hallmark community. We just did, we did, you know, we do the, each, each October, we do the Autumn Festival, it's twenty-three years old. We had six thousand people. Six thousand people, that's huge. You know, so I mean, we're, we're, we're bringing people into downtown and, and that helps the businesses. And that helps the businesses, that helps that bring tourists, spend about a hundred and forty dollars a day when they come to visit us. So those are, those are goals. What else can I tell you?
Thank you, Sejdah. Tammy, you're up.
Again, you didn't tell us when we were talking.
I didn't want to.
Thank you for having me.
I, I wanted it to be impromptu, off the cuff.
All right.
I didn't want you to spend a lot of time, but.
I'm Tammy, City Van EDC, I was formerly Grand Celine for three years. And now Van, um, we are currently a population of twenty-eight hundred. And I did not realize how much your population affects development. So if you're not a population of five thousand. Um, most businesses don't only come to you. So, um, however, I did get a phone call. Uh, a couple of weeks ago about a acre property we have next to Taco Bell and it's a franchise. Um, that's interested on what growth we have that's not listed. And we do have a fifty-four home subdivision coming in, they extended to the city. And we also have a senior living facility that's in the works. So our population is growing. Um. So. Um, economic development for us is a little different. We have been investing in. Uh, paying off a million dollar road since I've been there, we've paid off a park row. And we've given fifty thousand dollars a year for water. For our water, I mean, well, and it looks like we are trying to get a water well number four. So we will probably invest in infrastructure. With that water, we can grow and.
So the road, did y'all pay for a road or you?
Park row was put in, I think in twenty fifteen for, um, East Texas Seals. And, um, there's other businesses down that road. It's a nice road. And, um, anyway, so they had. Taken capital funds grant from the road. So we paid that off early and let's see.
And that park row is about a half a mile and you said it cost a million dollars? Half a mile, a million dollars.
Pardon me?
Is it concrete?
Yeah, it is concrete.
It's a nice road, um, East Texas Seals when, uh, they were coming in. They have, I forgot how many semis he said that come in daily. For pickup and stuff and they needed this specific road to meet their demands. So at the time, the EDC.
Is it concrete? Is it a concrete road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's concrete.
It's.
So it's a half a million dollars for a mile?
A million dollars for a half.
A million dollars for a half mile concrete, concrete road.
And it then ends to a residential, um, but anyway, let's see, so.
So water is a big issue in your town, isn't it? Because, because of the oil field. I mean, your, your wells have to be on the outside of town somewhere, probably don't they? Like Moon Hill and different places.
So we, we're, we're working on infrastructure and then, um. EDCs can work with their CTE programs. So I've noticed we have like, um. ARS is welding. Uh, I'm gonna work with the schools to see if. We can base more of the training to meet the needs of our actual facilities. So when they come out of school, if they wanted to work, um, they would, they would be more qualified. And also we could help with schools, um, if they needed any equipment. That could help train for specific job sets. Uh, I did reach out to TJC last year to see if they would do a satellite campus in our vacant Dollar General building. They said no. Um, so anyway, Dollar General is no longer vacant, uh, vacant. What I wanna know from y'all is what you would be willing to help us with. We do have a lot of retail, like Wendy's. Seventy employees, they're twenty-four hour operation. So, um. With the state economic development, I know they don't really consider retail, um, economic development. But everybody went crazy over Buc-Ee's and Terrell. If that's what you think of Terrell, Buc-Ee's is there. Well, it's. Um, so right now, currently we're predominantly retail.
I think you got a prime location for something like, uh, the, the Buc-Ee's or whatever, right there across from Pollitt, in that corner. Because you've got truck stop, truck stop, truck stop. If you put something like Buc-Ee's, if somebody would come in, if you, I don't know how you do it. That's a prime location for cars only.
Right. So, uh, what are your requirements going to be?
That's, that's why we're having this meeting. We really don't know. The, the thing about, you know, how it's going to help. The county, uh, retail does not help the county. Uh, uh, there's no revenue that comes into the county from sales tax. Or, uh, and, and even with the jobs, because all that. Uh, the only thing that the county gets back is property taxes. That's the only thing. So I think that's kind of. That's not gonna be our sole focus, but that's gonna be a, a, a higher on the list. That's something that would generate property tax.
Well, and what's sad is all the big businesses I visit, um. You know, when I first started and I introduced myself and I said, well, how many employees do you have and how many of them actually live in Maine? And I was surprised how many people commute. Um, and then even in Grand Celine, you know, and all of their same thing. It's like, wow, people are willing to travel to work at the nursing home. Uh, when there's all these residents here, why aren't they taking these positions? But I don't know how to help you get money. How many you can help me get?
So they commute, is they, do they commute because there's not enough housing in Van rental properties? I mean, what is it?
It's just.
Because those are not high paying jobs at Wendy's. I mean, like, I wouldn't think they'd be very high paying jobs with me.
Well.
Where are they living? Where are those people living? Lindale?
I do like that the vein has, um, diversity and I'm sure Canton has, you know, more diversity, you know, with the duplexes and the apartments. And, and houses and the, the housing market's just gone crazy. It's.
To answer your question, Mitch, on those restaurants, it's, a lot of them are, uh, they're high school kids, but Van High School. I bet you, and I'm, I'm assuming here, twenty-five percent of those kids, maybe even less, actually live in Van. Cause that's. It goes all the way to, uh, almost railroad tracks on Jamestown.
I think there's more students than there are residents.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred.
So there's just not a, well, most of your people commute to Van, even the schools.
Houses are done.
You have, you have infrastructure in place for you to be able to grow? I mean, like, is there, is there water? Is there? No water.
Well, we're, we're going to, uh, to go on.
Bond for a well, another, another well. Cause you had one well fail, correct?
And, um, well, number three is not, I mean, any day it's supposed to be up and running, but.
Beyond the plan for that, uh, entrance ramp, you know, where the Dairy Queen is, cause. I mean, I'm, I'm just kinda looking at forty over here. They've got, you know, Wendy's and, I mean, you name it, they got it. And that, to me, that's a perfect spot for that. Is right, is right past that.
Next thoughts, I'm going to be at our March meeting. EDC meeting to talk about. I know all the access roads are going one way and.
When, when they expand it. Once they get it expanded, that's like twenty.
Developing for that, the access routes and also an update on what's going on in the county.
Potentials there, Loves want to put it on both sides of the road.
And Pollitt.
Yeah, potentials there.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I heard, I heard that Loves is one of the highest volume stores that they have in their nation.
Yep.
Yes, right.
Wow.
Um, but EDC, you know, can help with the infrastructure too, but hopefully they develop or should develop. That will be the ones to bear that cost.
Does it benefit the county indirectly? No, it doesn't benefit the county directly. It doesn't benefit the county.
What is that?
Well, I mean, you said we don't get any tax. The county gets no taxes off retail and stuff like that, but does it benefit the county indirectly? I mean, you know, where.
The physical structure. Well, yes, indirectly it does.
Yeah. That's, yeah.
Not financially, but.
So final line of what you're talking about Mitch, you know, Grant, you said your area wants to be the small town and I agree. I mean, I've been here fifty years.
I don't think the town needs to be small. I just think that the community doesn't wanna.
Right. Yeah, the, the ones that like, I've been here forever. I don't wanna see it. I, I like it the old way, but. You know, we can't help it.
I'd love to see Grand Celine thrive again, so I'd like to see it.
But you gotta have good paying jobs, which is go back to that interstate. I mean, that interstate's important.
So on the interstate, are you wanting? Um, retail jobs? Are you wanting manufacturing, distribution?
I think like in your town, this is my opinion, you know, you do the, do the retail and do the restaurants, but as far as. You know, maybe outside of town between Canton and Van or, and the whole thing. I, I think it should be, you know, warehouse jobs, Home Depot, uh. You know, not necessarily, you don't want those in your town.
Right.
But, uh, you know, I mean, you know, Amazon. Pick a video, Amazon warehouse right between, in the middle of Van and Canton.
They'll, they'll have water. That's the water.
I mean, I'm dreaming here.
Well, again, all that land is privately owned.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
They can ask what they want and so currently our EDC hasn't focused on purchasing property for an industrial park or a business park.
Yeah.
Um, it may be somewhere down the line, but right now we're focusing, um, we. We've started doing facade grants to help existing businesses update, um, their buildings. And we're working on things to help them expand their businesses. And then, like I said, I'm definitely peddling other people's property, um, as much as I can, even if.
So what's, what's it gonna take? This is the question I hear all the time. What's it gonna take to get a Chick-fil-A? Population, is that?
Chick-fil-A for this area, also has it for Lindale and for Terrell. So, um, there's restrictions.
Okay. And would that person be the one to open a franchise?
If they choose.
If they choose.
I think we have the, the traffic, um, but it's up to them and I wish I had it down for everybody asking that question.
Yeah, well, Kim's the one to get it. I mean, is Lindale that much bigger than Canton?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is much bigger.
You know, I, I have to say something. I look at Starbucks, you know, people's, I'm, what do we have at Starbucks? Oh, Van got a Starbucks. You know, we have two locally. Owned coffee shops. And I'm just gonna say, you've got one, Honey Espresso, who buys all of their beans. From a local bedroom, right? And they give back to the community so much. We should support our smaller businesses who are killing it in our community. I'm not saying not to support a Starbucks or something, but. I mean, we, we have two great coffee shops. So, you know, instead of always focusing on maybe the stuff that we don't have. Supporting our small businesses so that they can continue to grow. Cause let's face it, small businesses employ more businesses, more, more employees, period.
Yeah.
And so small businesses are extremely important. We have, um, love for creating, uh, entrepreneurs with first lending. And we should focus on a lot of that and, and maybe, yes, we need your big industry, you know, maybe outside, I get that. We need to focus on high paying jobs. We have, if we don't own the land, we can't put anything in there or, I don't wanna say control it, but. We can't focus the right type of growth. We don't own the land. And if we don't have water, like Canton's really good, we're doing a pretty good job on our water, um, but there's just some stuff we don't have control over. And so we just have to ride it out and, and focus on the things that we do have control over. So, love to have Amazon, but I don't know if we'd love to have Amazon. Think about it, that would change our schools. It would, I mean, it would, it would change so much. And so do you really want that kind of growth? I don't know. Maybe you don't.
Interstate twenty still expand at some point.
Interstate twenty is, is, are on the path. That's why they're tearing down the bridges now is to make them wide enough to accommodate, uh. Up to eight lanes. But the initial plan is to go to six lanes through, uh, uh, and, uh.
Twenty twenty-five.
Uh, twenty thirty or beyond.
Yeah.
I think it's starting at almost.
I'd really have it be preparing for it, kinda like what we're doing with these other projects. Prepare for the future before it hits us in the face. We're like, uh-oh, what are we gonna do now? Yes.
As long as we don't have to raise tax on our residents.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else? Well, thank y'all so much for coming and sharing with us. And, uh, I don't know if we can come up with a plan, but we'll work on it. Yeah, yeah. Right. No, economic incentives, not, not taxing.
I know nothing, no say.
Well, bring us, bring us your proposals and we'll deal with it. Thank you. All right, we'll take a five minute break since Commissioner Williams is out and, uh, uh, and then we'll discuss FEMA cleanup. I apologize for not better communicating what we're gonna talk about, but I think you'd be great. So how are you keeping your days busy now?
Oh, I'm enjoying that.
Are you? Keith. I've had someone inquire about buying the property where the Will's Point, uh, where the barn is. Yeah, they want they wanna buy the property and that's I'm sorry, it's, you know, it's easy, I'll come back and say. Trying to bring a mixed use development there, it's about a hundred million. I don't understand, but, uh. The severe weather is supposed to hit us today.
If if the cat wears. Possibly, if if the cat's like, if the cat employs.
Well, I'm I'm okay with the rain part because I planted my garden last night. So I could use a rain. They're individually owned, aren't they? Where are they writing to you? Why are they not set? They're writing for like a a larger.
They're they're born, they're they're nuts. Everything they evolve, but it's not cheap and so a lot of this. Business called and said, I got one about honor back there to put a home depot and I said, sure, but the the price is high. They said, thank you very much.
Cause I mean, we have four acres and if somebody wanted, and there's past our. Our fifth line is.
We can't get it over until we get started.
I guess Cliff's okay, I didn't say.
On this one? Yeah, well, I'm glad it's on there, cause we didn't talk about it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree.
All right, I will pause. We are back in the session, ten oh, ten, uh, fifty-five. Uh, discussed FEMA cleanup and the the reason we need to discuss it is. Uh, the, uh, jewelry construction is the one and, uh, debris tech are the two companies that are working. They're working together real well and the county, uh, we have hired Darrell Easily. As our, uh, as our county representative and he's working to, he's out there on the roads showing them where to pick it up and working with the two. But what I did not anticipate is that they're gonna work seven days a week. Until they get it done and I I can't really have Darrell out there seven days a week. For one, way too much, uh, time for him and two, he doesn't want to do it, so I need some help. As far as, uh, if there's anybody else, I I told Darrell I'd I'd help this weekend. Uh, Saturday and Sunday afternoon if he needs me to be out there, uh, cause he can't do it either and Vicky McAllister is agreed to to do it too. When she's available, but, uh, I I just need to see if there's anybody else.
Does it have to be? No, I guess it doesn't, um, cause I know I've got some guys that would. Work on Saturday and Sunday that they don't have any comp time or anything.
That would be great, just just to have availability and, uh. I'll have have them sit with Darrell and and they would, uh, you know, to know who the players are and whatnot and they're pretty much. Uh, and they are, they are picking up everything from all the county roads. Okay, as long as it's, the 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 question is, if somebody just put it out there recently.
Yeah.
That most likely will not get picked up.
What about the storm we had last week?
They they said they would pick that up, even though it is.
So if I haven't turned in enough, I mean, how are we gonna have to pay for that? Like, we'll have to pay for whatever they pick up.
Well, we have to pay for everything that they do, but return it back into FEMA into T D M for reimbursement.
And where's that, where's that money coming from? When we pay them, where's it coming from?
It'll it'll come out of, uh, uh, I believe it's gonna be contingency. In other words, you're not gonna get charged for it.
So if if I told. One of my guys, he said, yeah, I'll do it. He wants some comp time. Is is that going to comp time or or not? It just gets paid. Regular overtime through FEMA.
Uh, well, no, we have to pay for it and and what happens is. Uh, all of the salaries, we keep track of the hours used to do this and we then turn it into FEMA and T D M. To get reimbursed.
What part of our budget is that payroll coming out of? Will it come out of my line?
Yes, it will.
So.
And most likely.
So I could get to the end of the year and not have enough to finish.
That is, that is correct, because it's most likely we would not be able to submit, we would not get reimbursed by the end of the fiscal year.
But you have a contingency that if that happened, you could take that contingency money and put that in there. Cause that is an emergency reason, so you would you could cover it and then get reimbursed and put it back there.
I understand that, but but with the budget, there's nowhere I wanna be.
But would the labor be over time if they worked on the weekend?
Is that the time and a half, right?
I didn't know if that was a different, basically a different job.
Yeah, anything overboard.
I need you to name today.
All right, clean them over. Give me some names and, uh, I'll actually.
I'd just rather have my employees be in my precinct.
Well, they're not gonna have that choice if they're filling in, cause they're gonna have to be where they're working.
They'll be working, they'll probably do it by precinct, by precinct.
You you can tell Darrell that when you get to precinct one, these guys are available. That's that's what you can do.
And so most, a lot of my roads weren't turned in on that original list.
Mm-hmm.
Because I I think he turned that over to the hard time guy, so I don't. So so how, so can we just say, let's do every road we got?
No, you can't, you can't do that, uh.
Even so, I mean, I have some that are, I'm talking about heavy, heavy debris on them.
I'm telling you, you're not gonna get reimbursed, what had been turned in is even, they are not gonna be reimbursed for it. This company will pick up. Like Andy said, they'll pick us from last week and they're gonna charge it, but they might not replace that because they haven't proved it.
That's not what he just told me.
Well, technically, the monitoring company or the 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 two companies working right now are not working off of. What we turned in, the claims we turned in.
They will turn it into FEMA, correct?
Yeah, they will turn it into FEMA. What the the stuff that we put together was basically to get an idea of how much cubic yards it was. And, uh, you know, that that's the question that's gonna come is, uh, how much additional cubic yards? Cause because we did close to ten thousand, of course, that's that is nothing compared to what Smith and. Hoffman did, there was there were over two hundred thousand square, uh, uh, cubic yards. And so, uh, but and I don't don't believe they're 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 tracking them back. What it is, it's the work orders that get generated at the truck and the items picked up, as long as it's debris being picked up. That was from the storm, the a storm, then the FEMA is technically gonna pay for it.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be on that first list. I can turn in a road that they just missed.
Yeah. And and the company said that they 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 were willing to do, their objective is to pick up all the debris on the county road.
Ultimately, I would. Well, I'm talking about stuff that just was, it's been piled, I can send, I can take you to places that half of my stuff wasn't turned in. And according to the fire marshal, I can't burn it. So I've got, either I've gotta pay for them to pick it up. Or FEMA FEMA pays for it, but I've gotta do something with it, cause I, according to the fire marshal, I can't burn it.
From from what it sounds like right here, we turned in the tonnage square. Yards.
Here we go.
Uh, and if we go over that, then we're gonna have to pay for that.
What is my other, what is my other option? Like, if I can't?
You can burn it.
I bet I can't.
Uh, you might not can, well, it depends if you pile it up in a six by six.
There he will, yeah. Yeah, I take back what I said this morning.
So. Kind of what Mick said, he'd rather have his in this precinct, it doesn't matter to me, but do we wanna do it that way? Like, if they're in precinct one, your guys, precinct two, Cliff, I mean, I don't know if you have any guys, precinct, I mean, go down. Or just get somebody.
We we just need somebody that can help out, so that that Darrell's not working a hundred and twenty hour week.
I need what you need.
I'll do some of mine.
I'm I'm sure I've got some guys that will be glad to work in it.
Just just put together the names and phone numbers and, uh, and, uh, and kinda what. A guideline of what they're willing to work, um, you know, maybe some weekdays that that, uh, Darrell needs done too, but. You know, their intent is to get it all done in, uh, uh, well, thirty days, but with these rain events keep occurring. You know, they were out there, they had two trucks Monday and the first truck got stuck in the pit. So they were unable to do any further loading and so, uh, you know, it's just gonna depend on the weather or whether or not thirty days or forty-five or sixty days. Yes, I'd appreciate it, uh, uh.
How many, how many cubic yards will we turn in total?
The total was, uh, right around ten thousand and eight thousand of that was in precinct two.
Can you, can you describe a bit, Judge, what Darrell's doing?
Darrell is coordinating with the, wha- what happens is, and again, part of the debris removal is the, uh, hanging limbs. And leaning trees and so every time they they're going down a road, county road. And they've got a hanging limb or or whatnot, they, you know, he'll point it out and then he has to get with the monitoring company. To determine if the monitoring company is gonna allow that to be a hanging limb or a leaning tree that could come down. So he's he's the interface from the county side on what we need to do. In that regard.
I can just get it picked up, I'll be all right.
So so but they're not just picking up what's laying on the ground?
No, it's, uh, it's the other.
Potential falling.
Yes, potential falling.
From that storm.
And also, uh, stumps, there are there are certain stumps that, uh, they're going to be dealing with.
So if a tree fell down and it's laying in the easement, they're not getting that?
No, they are.
What if it fell from our easement onto people's private property?
No, we're not, they're not going on private property. Unless they have to cut something down.
Haven't asked, people ask me, like, they're saying, that's y'all's tree, what, you know, what are you gonna do about it?
And not go on private property.
And I'm probably not going, you know, I can't do one and not do all of them, so I'm not going on people's property.
Right, no, it's not designed to go on the private property.
Well. Quite quite honestly, the the, there's there, we're parsing a few things, we're kinda mixing them all together. The property is owned by the by the private individual from all the way to the center of the road, so it's their private. It's their property. We have an easement for a certain amount of space. So when a tree in their property, which happens to be in our easement, falls on their fence, that's not our problem. That's not our, that's not the county's issue. It's not our tree, it's their tree, we just have an easement over that 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 tract of land.
And we're just carrying our easement.
And we're gonna cut all of them so that they don't fall.
Uh, here comes Facebook, it'll be all over it.
Well, I I mean, it's a serious problem, I mean, I my my precinct turned in probably a quarter of what it should have turned in. But I don't care about the last storm, I probably had thirty trees come down. This last week, I mean, we were, we worked probably twenty-five hours trying to clear trees and we cleared one big tree, just to let you know what it cost us to do it. I went back out the next morning to clear that tree, we got it off the road and then to get it up off the road, it took my whole crew, an excavator, two dump trucks. Five hours to get it picked up and cleaned up. So I mean, if we had to do all that.
Where'd you take it?
I ain't gonna say. I don't know where they took it. Of one of them forty-three fires. You know, I don't know, I have a place to take it, but like, um. You know, I'm not dealing with T C Q or whoever's, you know, like. It's got us in a bind, the piles are caught, they're, for one thing, me personally, I think the piles in the ditch are a safety issue. And then if they're not a safety issue, they're destructive to the road because they're stopping up the ditch. And then they're an eyesore and they're making the public mad, they wanted to pick it up. I mean, I told them, you know, it looked like termites gonna get them before we got them, but. Um, but they understand that we're dealing with federal, the federal government on it, but I've I've got a problem is, my problem is. That not enough was turned in and, um, I could, I could easily spend seventy-five thousand dollars just picking my junk up at twenty dollars cubic yard. So I don't know, I I wanna be reimbursed, Keith, so I reject what you say. Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen, but.
Issue kind of issue a little caution to y'all, because y'all are in that jury and that other company.
And I was also told that I couldn't pick them up, or I would have done, started picking them up, but they told me I couldn't pick them up.
Who's that?
Why don't, yeah, I could do all this stuff in line.
But now I can't pick them up.
Oh, no, no, you can't, if you got a place to go with it.
I just, I'm just, I'm just picking them up.
Okay, yeah, you can pick them up and leave them on your truck, yeah.
That's actually for the federal government, we need some of us. We're gonna be responsible for fighting that, whether they fight us or not.
But we have to get them up either way. Right, we can lose the crop weight on federal government, I mean, I'm tired of looking at it, tearing my roads up, my people are mad.
We have collected thirteen thousand dollars so far. Uh, and that was on two claims, I think it's precinct one and precinct three maybe. Uh, and that was for the time that y'all spent to cut up the the limbs and throw them off the side.
Okay.
Just the labor, that that's all we've done. Just the labor, that, that's all we've done, we still, we still don't have all the, all the details in for the roadwork and, uh, so that. They're working on that.
Awesome.
So, all right, is there anything else on FEMA? If you will, get your names and numbers of the guys and any special requests or requirements, uh, get them to me and I will get them to Darryl and we'll kind of figure out a schedule.
FEMA, we got, I'd like to know, because I'm a part of it, that I am doing, you stayed in there, funded back for precincts money, in the home.
It's in the revenue pockets and, and, uh, precincts three and four. And then we can go ahead and transfer the revenue to offset the expense. You know, whatever you said.
Can I, can I hire a, can I hire a part-time guy to read it, so I'm not gonna pay overtime?
Uh, you don't have a part-time position, uh, if you have a part-time position in your budget right now, yes. If you don't, no. Some, some, some have part-time secretarial or, uh, uh, as an administrative people in, in their budget, I don't know, I think April was in there. April was part-time.
I've got part-time people working for me.
But part-time positions aren't in there, you can park your money in a line.
Yeah, right.
You can.
Right.
Pick your part, part-time positions, if you've got the money in your line, I don't part-time.
Well, if we're gonna have to, we're not gonna be reimbursed, I'm using part-time and I'll probably work on Saturdays.
Well, we don't, again.
Okay.
We're, we're moving forward, that we're getting, getting reimbursed, cause that's what FEMA and that's what, uh, we spend a lot of time on.
You want it because I'm right, I'm, I'm, you know.
Or I may have to pay for it.
Well. If you wait till after their time of getting it up and they say, okay, we're through, then go, but then go do your picking up.
I wanna spend my money on roads, I don't wanna spend it on wood. There was a mistake made, well, I'm saying I'm suffering for it, like, my pitch was suffering for it. So if I'm gonna have to pay them twenty dollars yard to pick up my five thousand yards I've still got out there, I don't wanna do that. I wanna put that money on the road, I'll pick it up myself.
Well, Andy, that's the challenge, the, well, I don't, we.
I don't wanna pick it up.
I don't know that the money we're spending to have this done is going to be allocated back to the precincts based on the amount picked up, I think it's.
Now, imagine your fund.
Yeah.
The general fund will pay for it, so the money that comes back goes back to the general fund.
So it's not coming out of my fund?
No, no.
Of this, the court.
I just got something.
We should, yeah.
Have some say on that.
Not, not, not this part, not the part that we clean the roads, that will go back.
Right, the stuff that we can identify.
The stuff we're doing now is what won't go back to the.
Right.
It'll go to the. That's what we're bringing them for, cause he, his fund is paying for it, what's going on now, Andy's funding it back.
So the county judge is paying for the heck of it.
You say my fund is, it's gonna come out of contingency.
Yeah.
Yes, until contingency will get.
Not roll rich contingency.
Right.
General fund.
Right. But we, we can't allocate it, cause we have no idea how much it's gonna be at the current time, we have to wait until it gets charged.
Well, I apologize for.
Oh, no. Can I ask a question? Would you, um, give us your opinion?
Basically. And you took our precincts, even I know there's E O S that are needing to be created, um, so we already have a revenue line for, um, disaster reimbursement. So we just created a new expenditure for disaster reimbursement, the intent could be only put things in there that is going to be reimbursed by FEMA. Um, you know, or it's, it's there for future use in cases, I mean, kind of grants that are paying up for disaster. But, um, you know, we only wanna put anything into that if we have submitted all of the documentation that we need for, um, reimbursement or. It may need to go in person, we're gonna have the documentation to then give it to FEMA, but we just don't, we'd like to separate that out, so that we can go ahead and. Ensure that we're getting back from FEMA what we intended to have reimbursed.
What she said.
Well, what will happen is we will get invoiced and, and, uh, jury's not gonna invoice us, uh, I told them just invoices at, at a monthly. And they're not gonna do it per load or anything like that, it would be quicker, and then once we get that. Invoice from them, then we turn around and submit it to FEMA and TDM, or I don't know if we do both of them or what, and, and for reimbursement.
But I don't think it's clear that, that, uh. Braden and, and Man, Manu and Braden and, and the other ones that were here. It's all road bridge except for the cleanup, except for the brick.
Right.
And the, and the general fund. Was going to make it. And so anytime you get back from, from FEMA on this pickup that they're doing right now, not the road repairs, not the self-coverage that we're having. Check on it, they don't go to road bridge.
Goes back into his.
Right.
General fund.
The reference, basically, to reimburse anything that is coming out of our bridge. So, you know, if we have any road bridge expenditures that are. And put it in the expenditure.
That's what I'm saying, you need the revenue line, you need the revenue line for, for the general.
For the general fund.
Because the general fund should be getting this money back.
The biggest part of, basically.
This plane up is going on right now.
Yeah.
It won't go to road bridge, it shouldn't, because road bridge not there.
And, and road bridge is not even doing anything.
Yeah.
Road, road bridge is not even really having anything to do with picking it up.
No.
It's about to.
Yeah. So.
All right, anything else?
Well, well, so the labor that we're paying our hands, we won't get reimbursed for that?
Well, it will get submitted.
So you're saying that that's the one that will be on, on the road and rest lines? No, I'm talking about the labor that we're gonna have our hands working on weekend.
Right, it will, it will get, it will get submitted separately and. Based on the hours that your employees have put in, and then, uh, yes, that amount will get credited back.
It will get credited, we're not guaranteed we'll get that back.
Right.
But is, but we will have to have, we already have a line in road and bridge for that.
We took, but it's, it's the labor, it's just against your salaries, um, in the employee salary lines.
So we don't need to create a new line for it? It's so complicated.
Yes. All right. Is there motion adjourned?
Play motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was a vote.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
This one, we're gonna vote against something.
Yeah.
Just wanna vote against something.
Can I say something?
Oh.
Who, who seconded that motion to adjourn?
Ah, yeah.
Flip it.
In whose motion?
I did.
I'm for it too, I'm not against it.
Uh, Brett, uh.
I changed my vote.
You changed your vote on, on?
That's fine. Wait till Thursday night. Dude, I'm sorry, I, I stay confused most of the time.
Well, that's good, because, uh, it makes us slow down and, uh, explain to everybody else.
They did the.
What we're doing there.